Called a meeting to order. At five oh.
Four.
Four P M. Okay, roll call vote of trustees.
Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Brother.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
Todd McDaniel.
Here.
Chad Sargent.
Here.
Here we have it, come on.
Recognition of guess, fewer and fewer every month. Thank you for that. Okay, consent docket. The following items are considered routine by the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with my motion, discussed and desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent docket and considered separately. Do we have any discussion for the approval of the April eleventh, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes? You should have had a chance to own it. Look over those? Any discussion? No.
No one.
Any corrections? Do we have a motion to approve the April eleventh special meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the April eleventh meeting minute.
Thank you, John.
I second. I'll second.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call vote?
Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Woodman.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Okay, um, motion carries to approve the April eleventh, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes.
Okay, claims list, any discussion for the claims list?
Okay. Okay.
Somebody's phone. That's not funny. I can sure.
No, no complaints this month, there we go.
Okay, all right, so no, obviously no discussion if we have no claims.
Okay.
Okay, um, do we need to? Call the roll or claims if we don't have complaints?
No, I think that's enough.
What do y'all think?
Take no action.
No action, okay, that's a big fat no.
All right.
Um. There were no items removed, we took no action on the claims. Before we go to item number six for executive session, if we could quickly move to item number nine and approve the plat for Brad Snyder. I'm gonna go ahead and read the agenda item for everybody, it's the discussion, consideration and possible action to approve the final plat situated in part of the northwest quarter, northeast quarter and southwest quarter of section two and part of the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of section three, all in township five south, range twenty-four east of the McCurton County, Oklahoma submitted by Brad Snyder. Any discussion? The subdivision is already within the municipal bounds, it's just he's just now getting his, um, lots put together, you have a copy of that in your, um, packet, Southern Sunrise, phase two.
I wouldn't know.
That's Lost Creek, you should have one more. Right here. Southern Sunrise, phase two. Nobody has any questions?
Is it just, is it just the four or four, five lots highlighted?
No, sir, that's, uh, those are gonna be reserved for commercial, this is out there for the monetarities. So this is camper intro. And then this is what we're calling. Yes, sir.
How, how many lots in that?
I think it's a hundred and fifty-six. Hundred and eighty-eight.
Daniel.
Coming.
I think it's one eighty-eight.
One eighty-eight. I've seen it on the way, I'm just gonna see it.
Point something.
I know this one is, um, Kevin Perry said he has a water certificate that he has, I didn't know this one was Brad.
The county will demand the water certificate. Okay, yeah.
Got it.
Do you already have that?
I do.
Yeah, he already has it, but I just don't have to approve that. Okay.
Uh, I make a motion, we approve the plat for Southern Sunrise, phase two.
I second.
Made a motion by Todd, seconded by Janet to approve Brad Snyder's plat for Southern Sunrise, phase two, within the municipality of Hoach Town, roll call vote please.
Uh, Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Um, McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
If you know, can you approve, um, carries to approve the final plat situated in part four, north west, north quarter of south range by Brad Snyder.
Did you bring your stamp?
Yes.
Okay, I know he would like to have this stamp and he probably wants to go home.
Today's name and Mr. Plaid.
It's a candy or B of all.
We'll start keeping a copy of these in our office, so, what if y'all didn't make it to three copies when y'all did this?
Uh, they make enough so I can have one for each person, this model, one goes for the hang it up.
Right.
And then one for the county clerk, county clerk. If I have some extra stuff.
Okay, yeah, so we want to have one in our, in ours.
I gave them a print.
We can print one, yeah, we can.
Thanks, it's good.
Okay. She's ready to go, okay?
There you go.
All right, so please copy that.
Yeah. Heat's still wet.
What was your office?
Kind of squeeze between.
One more.
What do you say? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I just, you know, appreciate it, a lot of my fans get to see the art.
All right, appreciate that.
Next we can first with us, you know.
All right.
Here we go again. That's right, that's right, so we appreciate Brad being part of it. Okay, um, what about Kevin Perry, so if he's not here, will everybody show the face with him? Yeah. Well, he's not even here. Yeah, yeah, let's just. That's what I was thinking, um, that we can do this last, since he's not here, so that everybody else can.
Right.
Okay, all right, back to, um.
I'll do number ten.
Number six. Okay. Agenda item number six, discussion, consideration and possible action to enter into an executive session to discuss confidential communications between the town and the town's attorneys concerning a pending investigation, claim or action which the town, with the advice of the town's attorneys, has determined that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the town to process the claim or conduct the pending investigation, litigation or proceeding in the public interest in compliance with this duty of confidentiality under the provisions of twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B four, possible addition of town coach count to Bonderosa properties and others versus McCurton County, board of county commissioners and others, see the twenty twenty-three twenty-six. We will now go into executive session of trustees and call time for the minutes.
We made him have a motion to go into executive session first and then roll call time.
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second, sir.
Roll call vote to go into executive session?
Yeah.
Yeah. Todd.
Okay, roll call vote, Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Woodman.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
If the motion carries to go into executive session at five sixteen. And I can tell you guys who that one is.
Okay. Okay, there was no action taken during the executive session, so we're going to reconvene at at five forty-four. But we would like to have a motion to approve legal representation if and when the town of Coach Town should be called into a lawsuit.
Can the mayor make a motion?
Yeah.
I second it.
So we have a motion to approve legal representation, should we be called into a lawsuit?
Yes. Seconded by Todd.
Okay, seconded by Howard?
Okay, I had a second by Todd.
You made a motion, Todd seconded.
Right, right. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call vote.
Roll call vote to approve legal representation if or when your Coach Town is called into a lawsuit. Uh, Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
The motion carries to approve legal representation if and when Coach Town is called into a lawsuit.
Okay, item. Item number eight. Um, discussion, consideration and possible action to approve the final plat for Lost Creek Northwest situated in east half of section three, township five south, range twenty-four east, McCurton County, Oklahoma, submitted by Kevin Perry with KP three investments. You have that in your packet?
Yes.
Do we have?
He's not here.
He's not here?
I have his, I have his plat.
Okay, she's, she has it, so we just need to, um, make it, you have his corrections on his plat? I'll give you the correction.
Yes, I have a, I have a sheet, I didn't make them, oh, the mistake.
We didn't approve. Right, okay, okay.
But I have a sheet with what the word.
Okay.
These typos.
All right, um, yeah, a couple of typos on there.
I might read your motion with the corrected description. When, when somebody moves to approve it, you might move to approve it and read the correct description.
Okay.
If you've got it.
Well, I mean, the description is the same, there was just typos on the plat.
Oh, okay, you're good then.
We're good, yeah. Just two transposed letters, lots instead of lost and palt instead of plat. And city of Hoach Town versus town of Hoach Town, just so, just some small errors.
Um, I make a motion that we approve the plat of Lost Creek Northwest.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, any discussion on Kevin's plat? All those in favor? We do a little, roll call.
Uh, Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Woodman.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
If the motion carries to approve the plat for Lost Creek Northwest in McCurton County, submitted by Kevin Perry and KP Investments. Um, then would you, I do the assignment, you're in the way to.
We can just wait, wait until, yeah, we can just wait. Okay, um, item number nine, we took care of Brad, item number ten on the agenda, the discussion only of the Municipal Budget Act and Estimate of Needs Budget Law. Good discussion, good discussion for this, um, Charles, who's gonna go first?
You ready, Charles?
Just to put a lot of work in this.
You can sort of correct me if, uh, I'm wrong in the text or you can go ahead.
We've had, uh, recommendation, I guess I'll go ahead and bring her name up, uh, Crawford Associates, CPA of Oklahoma City, municipal CPA, we've had a conversation with South, uh, and Doug, Warner and Charles. Had a lot of conversation with him about our budgets, uh, when we need to get them established, how quick, whether we need, which one we go with and, and for what period of time. The recommendation is to go with the Municipal Budget Act, uh, long term.
Karen, let me interrupt you, are we talking about for current fiscal year or are we talking about moving forward?
Moving forward.
Okay. Just to make sure, because you said long term, I just wanted to clarify. Let me state one thing, you are by law automatically under the Estimate of Needs Act, so that's what you're under unless you opt to do the other, so it's not like we aren't under anything, we're automatically under estimate of needs until we opt to do something different in the future.
Right. So the estimate of needs is like, as she said, by law is what we're under right now, until we adopt something otherwise. Uh, because we have such a small amount of funds, uh, at current time, there's discussion of whether we really need a budget for fifty-year, twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm saying anything wrong. So, because of that, uh, Frank Crawford has sent us an agreement letter, and I'm, I'm maybe getting ahead of myself here, in any way getting into number eleven. But because of our discussion with them, that I've been highly impressed with, and a few of other of our citizens and Charles, would likely enter into an agreement with him on this for the remainder of our fiscal year, which is at present time, uh, through the end of the year of June thirty. He has agreed to work with us at X number of dollars per hour, flat rate, to help us for these six, next six weeks or so, or, or two months.
Okay, that's, that's, I didn't know.
I know, I was getting ahead of myself there. Anyway, we've got, uh, my recommendation is to go with them, we'll go with this, uh, budget of needs at that, uh, until such time we approve later on for next year. What else can I add?
Well, I have a question, but it may be more, it may be in number eleven, but these, this, uh, it's just till July.
June thirty.
This, this will hear, we only have six weeks, we don't have a minute.
On this date that we sign it until June thirty, into fiscal, into this fiscal.
And, and you may or may not have to do anything depending on how much money comes in, because it gets triggered by a threshold amount. But to have Crawford on board to be able to answer those questions and help you guys navigate it, as well as with council when that issue comes up, I think is kind of the idea about why we want to go ahead and get him engaged until, for just for this fiscal year.
It's threshold of twenty-five thousand, if we stay below that. We're running that risk if taxes come in, if larger tax come in, uh, before May, by the tenth of June, fifteenth of June, we could exceed that twenty-five thousand. We need Crawford on board to back us up on this if that happens. Okay, just to keep us legal. I've been impressed with him so far on time, so. I think Charles has that.
Yeah, he definitely seems very, well, qualified.
And being short-term like this, we, then we can decide, any, there's two letters that he sent, one of them is for next fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, which we'll add at later time.
Okay, any more discussion?
So, so, you know, all kinds of things to read on the budgets, how they work, what they do, but, uh.
So they, did, um, did they do a projected budget also, or is it a?
No, no, they don't know. Charles and I.
Okay, so you have work here.
For this current year.
But you won't have a, you don't have an obligation to do that until you hit the twenty-five thousand, so you may not even need that, but your CPA, once you hire them ultimately for next fiscal year, will help you do your budget.
Right. Number ten was, I don't know.
Right, just the discussion.
Number ten was on discussion item. About budgets.
But a lot of people very interested in budget, like, we don't have any money, we don't have a budget, you know? Okay, so moving on to item number eleven, discussion, consideration and possible action to retain the services of Crawford and Associates from May second, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to provide financial services for the current fiscal year. Any discussion on that?
Do you have a question for me?
The committee put a lot of work into this stuff.
Yes, uh, its standard fees, um, are familiar for the department president at two hundred sixty-five an hour, to a clerical staff of fifty dollars an hour. He's agreed to do it, whether he's involved or not, for a hundred and ten an hour. And he'll, he'll be involved. The, uh, the clerical staff will, will help maybe with us assigning great categories and talk that to our spreadsheet or, um, but as far as.
He actually wanted to come down, maybe let's deny, but the county's trying to, it's not necessarily, we have time. Would get you down here pretty quick.
And I, I have a question, uh, our audit, is this required for us to be able to do an audit? So their services can be rendered based upon our, our choice to, to bring them on? So if we decide we want to use their services, they all have a, you know, a, a timeline issue when we start using them, there's no, could it be a contract with the sign a little bit?
Well, that's what, that's what.
The thing is.
So you, okay.
So they bring it would be to take his part in a hundred and ten an hour for services he renders in regard to the current year.
If any.
If, 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 if there's any, if we're on, okay.
We're gonna be riding on the bubble in June, so we just want to make sure this month to make sure that we.
Okay, good, good, normal discussion. Uh, I make a motion to retain Crawford and Associates from today till June thirty to provide financial services.
That's my motion, we have.
I second.
Who's second?
Chad.
Chad. Roll call vote. Um, we have a motion to retain Crawford and Associates from May second, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to provide financial services, um, Janet Cress.
Yes.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Okay, um, the motion carries to, um, retain Crawford and Associates from May second, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to provide financial services.
I'm gonna excuse myself, make you guys. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
We need to go ahead and probably, if everybody will just stay after the meeting so we can execute the contract and get it signed.
Yes.
Yeah. I have other stuff for, for signing, so nobody leave until we get all of our paperwork signed. Okay, um. Item number twelve, are we good, Chad?
I consider.
Howard, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
We'll get our list.
Okay. Um, item number twelve, discussion, consideration and possible action to amend the regularly scheduled monthly town meetings from five P M. at the Chapel of Heinz, ninety-two seventy-six, North U.S. Highway two fifty-nine, to one P M. at the Town Hall, ninety-nine eighty-three, North U.S. Highway two fifty-nine, suite eight pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma Statute, section eleven. Discussion to, um, move the meeting. I'd like to move it to a Wednesday because there's too many people that have four meetings on Tuesday that need to be ten. I don't know if we can move the date. Does anybody know? You can amend, you can amend the motion. You want me to go get Liz? What do you think? Am I gonna amend Liz's motion to change the date as well as the time and location? Or the date for the Tuesday to Wednesday? Oh, I mean, we'll take a vote, but I think everybody, I mean, there's reason why.
She's got a point though, because the water has their meeting on Tuesday.
Fire Department.
Fire Department has its meeting on Tuesday.
Any day but Tuesday. Any day but Monday and Tuesday.
And the commissioners, they do, they do.
Those are just by the same.
Every other city council, water.
Yeah. Broken Bow is at four P M. every other Tuesday. It would really limit us to being able to visit other boards. That's what I'm saying, that we can amend the, amend the motion. That's what I'm saying, that we can amend that. Here she comes back. We can have a special meeting in two days or three.
I called her, she's coming back.
Oh, I can just stop. Good job. Are you gonna, she was waving, I was like.
She's probably like.
Was she on two fifty-nine yet?
She thought, yeah, she thought I was just waving.
She was trying to get out here for one minute.
I know, well, she's on the bomb.
She's trying to.
I'm about to say, can we, can we legal challenge papers once we're done?
No, that's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna try and nobody can leak.
Nobody can leak, do we turn any?
But everybody else can, if they choose to. Item number thirteen, on the white note. Yeah, let's, let's do that, um, item number, we're gonna pause on item number twelve. Item number thirteen, discussion only on the search community emergency response team training and the Eclipse Community Action Update. Yeah, Janet's worked hard on that.
Okay, your search train, here's your all papers to pass out. We need thirty people in this class, we've got everybody from Jason Ricketts to, uh, firefighters, to us, and if, and if, and if, uh, and I would think, you know, too, that it would be beneficial, something like Todd, definitely people on her date, to know search training, especially if they live in Hoach Town, even if they don't.
She'll act me down. Okay, so, we're talking about agenda of item number twelve.
Yes.
About moving it, I don't think we can have a vote that changes it to a, something different that's on the agenda because that's gonna be considered a substantive change. If you want to do that, we could have a motion to table and do it at the next meeting, but that would mean.
Another one.
Well, or you could call, if you had a special between now and then, you could. But it's just gonna have to be at least ten days before. So you can either vote for the agenda item you have on here as it is and go ahead and move it to one, or you can say we would rather wait and get the rest of them moved to Wednesdays, so.
We're gonna take it.
Okay, so.
Make the motion to apologize to Liz.
Oh, no, no, she, she's fast.
Oh, no, no, she, she's fast. Yeah, so I would just say that we're going to, yeah, we're going to take, yeah, take no action on that.
They could go ahead and discuss it also, they would have a.
Yeah, you could discuss it, you just can't, yeah, you guys are happy to discuss that, you just can't take a motion that's different than item number twelve. And then at the next meeting, if we can put it back on for, based on your discussion, sounds like what the majority would like to do.
Well, we can have a special meeting between now and then.
Yeah, mhm. The, the thing is, we just have to be, we have to provide it to the county, and our clerk has to post it at least ten days before it goes into effect. So if we're gonna want it to be in, for in effect for our May, or I'm sorry, it is May. For our June sixth meeting, we need to post it.
Ten days prior.
Yeah, ten days prior to that, yep. Good? Yeah, okay. Don't look back, you can leave that. I know, I might turn to salt. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, back on twelve real quick, shall we, the discussion being, when is, when is it convenient for people to have these meetings? That we do Wednesdays at one P M. at Town Hall, that's where we all plan to be.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Wednesday's is good.
Town Hall. It's a discussion. I mean, what do you, I mean, tell us what you want.
Oh, once you're tired, yes, okay, I'm good with it. I'm good with it any day other than Tuesday, okay, whatever we just happen.
I make the motion, we table.
Agenda twelve.
Agenda twelve, the discussion, possible action to move the regularly scheduled monthly town meetings. Make motion, we table. I second that motion.
Okay, we have a roll call vote to table. We have to vote on table motion?
By table and then do that, run it back at the next meeting.
That's what I said, we want to take no action.
I think we don't take no action.
Yes, just take no action.
If we take no action, we can get one.
Did he already move it and did it get seconded?
Okay, we'll vote on it.
Did somebody second your motion?
No, I said, yeah. Did you say, yes?
Then you have to vote on it if it was moved and seconded.
We'll take a vote on table.
Not to.
To not.
To not vote, right. Roll call vote to table.
Table, item number twelve. Janet Press?
Yes.
Howard Hager?
No.
Diane Jordan?
No.
Todd Daniel?
No.
Chad Sargent?
No.
Okay, the motion is not carried to table, item number twelve.
Yeah, I take a motion, take no action on item twelve. You may second.
Second.
Can you try to do this, this? For that? Then we're in discussion.
That's just info.
Yes, that's just.
Then we don't get dealt.
That's, that's.
Let's finish item number twelve.
Yes.
Okay.
We have a roll call vote to take to, take no action on item number twelve.
Janet Press?
Yes.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd Daniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take no action on item number twelve. We'll save that for our next little packet of things to work on.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll go back to the search.
Janet, you wanna go back to the search right now?
Okay, going back to search training. We've got, one of the things that, I'm working also with Cody Gil Burke, who is the working of Assistant Chief Fire and Rescue. He's having a meeting this evening, another Tuesday meeting, with some fire departments. And he's gonna present to them to, if they don't have, you know, training, to get involved in the search training. One of the people that's gonna come to this meeting is a guy, he is the Assistant Chief at Handler's. He wrote the O S U. Search and Rescue Program. So the program is gonna be really good, it's gonna be very interesting, you're gonna probably have six, seven, eight, or more guest speakers there. And that's one of the reasons we need to get thirty people in this class, it's the time, the money they spend in putting this all together. And we have, I have about seventeen right now. I've got two spots for Aaron at the State Park, so we'll have two from there. And some of us, I know, like, if, if I get more than thirty, I'll bail out and let somebody else go. Double bail out, let somebody else go. But I think it's gonna be a really good class, we'll have somebody present from E M S., law enforcement, firefighters, all types of activities. I'd really like to see people from the north end of the town, the middle of the town, and the south end, because we know wherever the problem is, the only people who can respond are the people who are in that area. And obviously, the damn room is a hotspot, because people are trying to get in and out of the park there. It is May twenty-second to twenty-four, it is twenty hours, it is sponsored by the Oklahoma Community Emergency Response People. That's who is doing this for us. And it will be a crystal course, I have a handout, if anybody wants one.
I hope you get it filled up.
I think we will.
I like I communicated to you, you know, I, I personally would like to step aside, but if you don't fill it up, I'll be.
Me too. Uh, it's gonna be in the paper. I gave it to Chris Willingham yesterday, and he's gonna put it in the paper.
Is he advertising it, please call us and sign up?
If he, I think he's doing, I don't know if he's doing exactly this, but it's up to him how he wants to do it.
Says it's two, and if he's putting that, it says two in rows, so maybe that'll, maybe by putting it in the paper will, uh, get some people to sign up, good.
I've got several too that I'll keep, I'll get to you.
There's some boy scouts in there.
Yeah.
And the Eagles got.
We have a unit of eighteen.
There's some basketball kids in there.
What is age, is there certain age?
There is a kids' search program, but this one, I do believe that, that you might have an age limit of at least eighteen. So, but I'll ask.
Well, you gotta remember exactly what this train is, this, this is a community, playing against citizen people, to get them involved.
Until real help arrives.
Until real help gets there, yeah.
Right.
Finish my sentence, well.
I'm sorry. Anything else on search? Search, that's it.
Thank you.
The Eclipse, she's trying to go right into this, it kinda gives us a reason of, I mean, we've been asking for search for two or three years up here now, at least, we've not actually. And the Eclipse is giving us a little bit of a reason to say, well, there's gonna be this big event. At least we know about it, usually when we have a big event, we don't give any notice. Okay, this is a little handout on the Eclipse. And did everybody get one? Everybody got one? We need an extra one, get one here for Howard. Okay, this is about, the first page. Uh, the first page there is Arkansas is having a program. Arkansas is doing county by county training. They got one in D Queen, they got one in Ashland, they got one in Nashville. So we, a bunch of us are going to the D Queen event. And these events are created by the, the University Division Agriculture, as you see at the bottom. You can just scan the little U L R code to register. Skip has registered, I've registered. I have been talking to Cody McDaniel's, who is our, let's see. So that's the first page, so let me go over here, so I won't get off track. It talks a little bit about the workshop, but Ready, Set, Eclipse, how host tourists and keepers sanity during the event of the decade. Okay, as we all know, it's gonna be massive confusion. The, the, the two main objectives is traffic control and where all these people will sleep. Let, you know, where they eat, that's third, you know, I'm not worried about that. Where the traffic control, where they're gonna eat, and of course, involved in those two things is the emergencies that might happen in the middle of it. So it's a five-hour workshop, lunches included. And if you turn to the third page, it talks a little bit about what we have going on. Texas, there's seventy-two cities involved in this Eclipse. In Oklahoma, we only have six cities. In Arkansas, there's forty-seven cities. Now, small cities like Baptiste, Becca aren't counted in this stuff, in the six cities in Oklahoma. Neither is Houghton Town at this point. But the largest city in your criteria of this is Podo. Uh, now, this was all done by a really good website, put a lot of these things together for us. The bottom line to this is Oklahoma isn't really driven on having to have great state of the arts training classes because they've only got six cities. So Arkansas is so, they wanna take care of their forty-seven cities that this thing's passing through. And that's forty-seven big cities, so that could be another forty-seven tiny cities that it's coming through that they didn't even register on, on their list, just like they did register Baptiste and Becca and Houghton Becca. The next page, the two thousand twenty-four Solar Eclipse, occur from county readiness. This is what charity presented at the meeting this last time. And these little avenues here, one, two, three, four, five, six. The first one here, the Eclipse, is Eclipse Planning Resources, the Eclipse two oh two four. These are some things that you can Google, you know, look up, and it's got some good information on them. Uh, the second one, weather response, I haven't really paid attention to that, or sky watching. But the, the best place to go is the, what's it called? The, and it's all in this list, is the nationaleclipse.com, great information on that page. I'm also joined a bunch of Facebook pages on people that are Eclipse chasers. And it's very driven with, I mean, these people are racing from one area to the other, trying to get to where they want to be next. The next meeting coming up with charity is July twenty-fourth at, at the Museum of the Red River, then October twenty-third, and January twenty-second. So, moving to the next page, what she has introduced at this last meeting is viewing location, registration forms, uh, event registration forms, and vendor registration forms. Now, the question would be if we want to do that in Houghton Town or drive all of this through the chamber? And then, of course, if she, and also she handed out temporary food establishment, permit guidelines for these vendors. So it's something to think about, if you couldn't take the time to read it, we've got plenty of time to decide if we want to handle something this massive ourselves, or if we want to work with charity and try to drop it all through the chamber as far as people having events. I think we should add this to our discussion when we're working on ordinances. You know, special event permits, whether it's for a dance or a Fourth of July parade or whatever.
And my question is, when you say the chamber, do you mean the Chamber of Commerce or the M C T A?
Uh, the Chamber.
The Chamber, okay.
Yeah. Okay, I have been working closely with Anthony at ODOT. Crystal, who is Cody McDaniel's boss, he is our McCurton County Emergency Management Homeland Security person. His boss is Crystal, I've been working with Crystal, Cody, Anthony, Aaron. And they are working, we are trying to do a network of response planning for traffic management. And involving the Curran County Sheriff's Office, the Oklahoma Highway Pro, the local police department, the State Park Rangers, and all those people together, maybe pulling forestry and all that stuff. Because, like I said before, traffic control is really kind of number one to get this thing started. It's gonna be chaos and crazy, I don't care what we do. But if we can make it a little bit better, and have some kind of system, and some kind of, you know, anything, decals or whatever.
Well, you're gonna have, I think the biggest, one of the biggest decisions is, you got all the people coming into town. Where are they gonna park? And can they just pull in, like a man goes parking lot, they're gonna pull in and just park and watch? Do you hire individuals to man your, every single business up to fifty-nine, or they, do they get pretty fast that you're in that period, and, and I mean, where are these people gonna park? That's kinda my question, because if they don't have a designated place to go, then they're gonna park in the businesses parking lot and potentially cause problems with, with, just like we have when we have our Fourth of July, you know, Fireworks Show, and hosted it for many years. I mean, it was, uh, well, like in any town, they go to the parking lots. So when they come through here, I don't see where they're gonna go. Are they gonna pull into the businesses and pick up? I mean, so that, to me, is something that I think we all have to kind of discuss, because they gotta park somewhere.
And that's why we're working with ODOT and the Sheriff's Office and current county sheriffs. I mean, we've got to know, first of all, what ODOT allows to do.
Yep.
And, and then working with Arkansas, because we've got a border right there, so what do you want to do at that border? Some towns had, Colorado, you have to have a permit to actually get into camp. They wouldn't allow so many thousands of cars. There is, there are. And you have to have a permit before they'll let you through. Yeah, and I talked about that, they, they had in one of the handouts, one of the Facebook pages, the lady was saying, why, I went to this city and they stopped me, I had to get a permit for a one-day pass into town. And that, and you have to hang it, if it's not there, they run you off. So, but.
I have another question here. Is the tribe involved in these?
Yeah, yeah, they did have the meetings, they weren't the last meeting.
I guess the reason I ask is as far as security, because I know that the county, the Sheriff's Department has three deputies for the whole county. To me, that's not enough presence in the town to, to deter. So I guess my question is, I hope the tribe is willing to send.
Yeah, and they probably will, because Aaron at the State Park is trying to get Park Rangers and people from the other State Parks, we're all in just for these events.
And then you'll have, you know, the Chalkville Landing should be operational. So they're gonna have a, you know, a tremendous amount of, you know, responsibility too for their own business to determine who, who comes in there and parks, and, you know, and they've got a, they've got a lot of property there, so they make a lot to do.
Yeah, and even though this thing is a year out, now, eleven months out, there's a lot of planning to do to get this thing where hopefully it's not totally, you know, the S. show. Okay. Everybody hear about Eclipse?
Yep.
Oh, you have some more?
Yep.
All right. Um, moving on to item fourteen, our logo contest. Uh, we thought it would be great if we sat around for two weeks and looked up full ideas, and we've all been huddled up and busy. So Chad, you wanna give us an update?
Sure.
Stand the deadline, we can think.
Well, we've got, up until now, we've got fourteen submissions, really creative submissions, young and old. We've had some professionals, had amateurs, but all of them are, are, are impressive, in my opinion. As far as like definitively coming up with one that we like, I don't think that that's something we want to do at this point. I think just framing these, printing all these logos off, we can hang them in the city hall where more can see them, and we can kind of look at them, and then I think the next step is really looking at our logos and saying, you know, how much value does a logo hold in a community? I think that logo's a big deal for a business, and it's a big deal for a, a city and a municipality too. And so it really can drive tourism, and it can also, you know, grow your, just your whole personality and identity. So it's a big decision, I know it was a big decision in my business and probably anybody that has a business, a big deal to design this logo. So I think that we take these, these fourteen, do we continue, you know, I've thought about that. I say we just take the fourteen that we've got, and we look at some graphic designers, and we send these fourteen. Because we've had plenty of time for people to submit. I mean, we could extend it, but really, we've got some good designs. I think we just take what we have, submit them to some graphic designers, determine who we want to potentially send them to, if we want to use someone local, or if we want to use a professional designer. And then we, we get through for potential.
And then we, um, we get through for potential logos and, and just start working on coming up with some, uh, you know, some options. And present those to the community. And we can look at them.
Do you have them printed off?
Yeah, I've got them all right here. Yeah, we've got them all printed off. So if anybody here wants to look at them in the crowd or.
What do you think of like framing them?
Yeah, that way everybody can come by, if you want to look at them. Yeah, just that's what I'm doing. Like I said, there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's, there's a multitude of, of, um, ideas of each one that I think we could take. But, you know, coming up with one that we feel like fosters what we're looking for in our vision and our, and just our whole identity, I think is, it's a big step. But this is a good first step. I think it's a good step. And there was a lot of work put into some of those, so I like it.
So is our discussion to keep working on the logo?
Yeah, I think we ought to set up.
We're going to vote tonight on.
I think we ought to set up a meeting, maybe put it on the agenda. We can maybe set up a meeting, maybe on our next meeting where we can discuss, look at them, and, um, and then we can, you know.
I agree with the statement you made. I don't like them extending any more than what we've got. Figure out some time when we get together and look at it.
And then we can, we can pull some graphic designers and see if we find more or two that we want. Maybe four of these two. Get some, you know, get some estimates or what the.
And, and of course, there's nothing said we have to pick, uh, just like one single. Like we could take things we like from each one of these and put it into a.
That's what I'm thinking. I think it's done a lot, it's done a lot.
And some of these, you could, there was a lot of work put into them. And, and so I'm excited about utilizing some of the aspects of some logo.
Any more discussion on logos tonight? I know we're kind of running out of time a little bit. Howard, you guys go, just go on.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, Todd's been working on wastewater management.
Uh, well, a few weeks ago, me and Diya went to visit with the tribe on the possibility of maybe, uh, utilizing their waste management facility that they are building back here. Uh, I was surprised. Uh, I figured they would want that to be a short-term deal, uh, just due to the fact that they've got so much more land to develop and possible usage as far as the waste treatment. But they showed interest in it not being short-term, they're being longer.
Well.
Uh, now, that being said, their engineer was pretty, he was not optimistic. But talking with the other people involved, they were very optimistic. Uh, so they've requested some information from us. I've been gathering that information. And then last week, I met with, uh, let me make sure I got all this information correct. Um, Cody Holken with, uh, he's with Civil Design Solutions out of Ada, Oklahoma. And he's been doing work for the tribe. And they recommended we give him a call. So I gave him a call. He came down, we met all day, we drove up and down, uh, looked at everything. Cody Holken, he's actually married to Mia Hubbard, who is, everybody that grew up here knows Mr. Hubbard. So he's got, he's got local ties. And we are not at a point now to actually maybe put it up in discussion to hire them, but he's been very helpful and that's what he wants. He wants, they want to be hired to do the work, to run the city sewer. And basically, the, the conversation we had was it's not for the cabins per se. That's all handled with septic systems that are DQ certified and permitted. But what this would be, would be a main, uh, waste line down to the corridor of two fifty-nine. Two, two fifty-nine A down here, and then go into there.
North.
North, north. Anything south of there is going to require more pump stations. Now, just in our first overlook, we are going to have to have a pump station to get over the hill right down here. Uh, but then the rest of it would be gravity flow to there. Uh, so right now, what we're, he's contacted ODOT and Anthony. He's very, he knows Anthony real well. And we're requesting some maps, uh, basically topo maps, you know, to get elevations and what we're going to need to get it here. Uh, ODOT came back and they said that they need Diya to request that information. Uh, but then they gladly handed over. And then at that point, um, he's willing to do the work to give us a price on what it would cost to do that. And then they would, and at that point, if we look at it and we think, okay, this is something we want to move forward with, then they would, of course, send us a letter of engagement and possibly hire them to do it.
So this would be a phase one potentially, that they would just connect and do, how far north?
Uh, I, I talked to, we discussed the market, the two fifty-nine market north, because that was the last commercial property, so that's how far we discussed going north. Uh, so, uh, with that being said, I would just like to keep just working with Cody on this and Anthony, because they'll be in coordinates. Because we want to do this when ODOT does its thing. Because we don't want to tear this road up twice. So we'd like to coordinate it with ODOT. Plus, ODOT's going to have to be so involved as far as where the line goes, what's existing, what's already there. Because, you know, we don't want.
I don't know, if you got water.
Yeah, we don't want to.
Our kids that are there going to hungry, okay.
Exactly, exactly. So it's going to have.
It's not just their, it's their.
Right. And, and so it's going to have to be coordinated here with ODOT, the Water Department, Chalko Electric, all of them, to be able to tell us where all these lines need to go, where pump stations are going to need to go. But, uh, like I said, I just want to keep working with Cody and, uh, hopefully get a, uh, an idea of the cost. You know, when he gives us this cost, a projected cost, it's not going to be the final cost. I mean, we all know that there are going to be variables that come into play through the process. Uh, but, uh, but anyway, it seems very much a possibility. Uh, the tribe basically said, get us the information, present it to us, and then we'll make a decision at that point whether to let you guys tie in. I believe they want to let us. Uh, they're permitted for nine hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. They asked, the engineer, they're estimated that the, the resort would use up six hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. Then I was told afterwards that that's a high number. They really don't think it's going to be that high. Uh, but that being said, uh, once we get this flow, these numbers off the meters here, we'll know exactly how much we need, just based on water.
My next question, where would your estimation come from? From Hot Water Meter?
Water Department's been helping us. Yeah, they've been great to provide the information.
Uh, the company is.
Civil.
Civil Design Solutions. And he's, he's the president that come in. He came down, he was real excited about the fact that we're building a town from the ground up. And he, they do that. They do a lot of municipal designs as far as sewer, you know, water. They, that's kind of what they do. So he was, he was super excited to do it. And I believe it would probably end up being kind of something, he realized the town has no funds at this point. So it would probably, he, he didn't say that this would be an option, but he meant that it would be something that they would be willing to do the work if funding was available.
As Chalko, you said, they're, they're, right now, they're, they're permitted for nine fifty.
Yep.
Did they give you any indication of future growth of what their plan is capable of doing? If it is as expandable, I guess.
They designed it for expansion, they said that.
Effectively, now, the permitting would have to be redone.
Oh, yeah. I understand that they have a permit for nine fifty.
Yes.
And that's, I'm assuming that's what they're building for.
Well, their six fifty is what they said their resort would handle. Or be putting out is what they estimate their, the resort will be.
I was assuming they're going to build bigger, bigger than just to handle six fifty.
Sure, yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. And, and the plan itself, they're building it to handle capacity. They can act relatively even. Um, and, uh, there was another point I was going to make there about the tribe, uh, and the six. Oh, they think the permitting, they, they, they feel pretty confident that they can get that permit number raised as well because the number that they, Yasha Creek is the.
Right.
The exit. And so they, the water that they're putting into Yasha is cleaner than the water that's in Yasha. So they feel confident that they can get that permit number raised pretty high. Or, you know, more added to that permit. So, uh.
It's a proven DMR.
Yeah. So they, they feel like when they, if they need to, when they go back to get more permitting, it won't be a problem based on that fact. That's, that's kind of where we are with city sewer. Uh, we're going to request those, those drawings from ODOT and then we're going to send those over to Cody. And then he'll be able to give us a, a preliminary estimate on the cost to run that line. And then once we get that, then we'll have to decide whether we're going to move forward.
All right. Good discussion, Todd. Okay, anything not known at the time we said our agenda? And you have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I think we need to sign any documents first.
Oh, yeah, let's, let's sign all of our documents.
Okay, then who signs this, uh, conference?
I think Diana, I think, um, the county mayor, they've printed that to the chief or executive officer or financial officer, it's a mayor.
Until it's. Until it's.
He's on the list? Oh, no, yeah, you keep on. Okay, so we have a motion by.
Todd.
Todd.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, let Janet. We have a vote to adjourn.
Janet Crass?
Yes.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd McHannell?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.